All right, good evening, everybody. This is the Town of Newbury, zoning board of appeals. It's seven thirty tonight. It is June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I am Eric Swan, Chair. We have Larry Murphy, who's our liaison from the planning board. Michelle Wheeler, who's an associate member. Jack Kelly, an associate member. Mario Lawley, who's a member. Martha Taylor, who's our town planner. And Chrissy Dupree, who is our administrator. So with that, Mario, would you like to read in first your public hearing?
David Daly, ten, ten street. The applicant is requesting a special permit binding for the relief of section ninety-seven dash four D five C zero two, upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws and other permit briefs that may be required on the Town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use project. The lot consists of a pre-existing nonperforming condition of two detached, single-family dwelling on a single lot, one of which was destroyed by fire in January twenty nineteen. The applicant proposes to demolish the remaining existing single-family dwelling on the lot and to construct two new detached, single-family dwellings on piling on the lot located at ten, ten street, Plum Island, Newbury, Mass., Assessor's net U zero three, lot seventy-eight, under Dominic and Carol Di Magno.
All right, so as we get started, and you can see that Elaine is not here tonight. She is a third member of the ZBA. And we have associate members. So Jack Kelly, who is an associate member, has been here for the last two meetings. With your understanding, I'm going to ask that Jack sit in for Elaine. And we proceed tonight, or give you the option for a continuance, knowing that Elaine's not here and you want to, would like to wait for her.
Well, you still have a full complement of voting members. And everyone has been at each meeting, so I'm comfortable moving forward.
Michelle, you missed one meeting?
I missed last meeting.
She missed one meeting, but you have, there's only three of us voting. And so you have three voting members.
Great.
Okay, so just give you the option to...
I appreciate that. Thank you. If we didn't have three voting members, obviously, we wouldn't get forward.
Correct.
But no, thank you for...
That's why we have associate members, so we ask to show up and stay with it every week.
That is great.
Okay, so...
Great, good evening, members of board. Douglas, DeShane, from Finner and Nicholson. I just got a text as I was driving over that my client left his house at Plum Island to come, and he had a flat tire. So he actually called an Uber, and the Uber says he'll be here at like seven thirty-eight. So Mr. Daly will be here soon. But I do have Ben Legary with me as well. Unfortunately, Everett Chandler, our engineer, had previous engagements, so he is not here. So I will be handling the engineering duties, among other things. So we are here on a continued public hearing, and I just want to, you know, for the record, do a quick little recap, and then I will get to the points at hand. In previous presentations, we have tried to address the questions raised by the board as well as our neighbors. In looking back over my notes, the neighbors have certainly raised a lot of questions about fire safety. And in fact, suggested that we connect the buildings that we'd make for a safer fire situation. And however, we're unable to, or my clients aren't willing to connect the buildings. And we don't necessarily agree that that would create any less of a fire hazard, because now you'd have two buildings almost guaranteed to catch fire, whereas if they are separated, there's always a chance they won't. However, in addressing those fire concerns, we have agreed to sprinkle the building, which is not required by code, but we have agreed to do that. We have agreed to use fire-resistant siding on the building, so that that provides significant additional protection. We have discussed fire safety with the fire department. To be honest, they were comfortable with the sort of the separation in the building and all that. Their questions were more about fire truck access and wanted to make sure that our driveways were okay. So we did address that. But as far as, you know, sort of the fire hazard of the buildings, the fire department didn't suggest any concerns and recognized that we were sprinkling and using the hardy board, which are two great fire protection items. So my clients have done everything reasonable to reduce the fire risk. And in many cases, these buildings will be certainly far greater protected from a fire situation than a lot of the buildings on the island and even some of the newer ones that aren't sprinkled and don't use hardy board. So I think from a fire perspective, we are improving the situation, certainly not causing a significantly more detrimental situation than what was previously existing. Again, and I'm sorry to be a broken record, but I do have to establish a record. We have shown we're not creating any new conformities. None of the existing non-conformities are being extended or intensified. We have eliminated all of the dimensional non-conformities, with the exception of the front yard setback of the first house, which we discussed extensively last meeting. And we recall we're currently, I believe, at about six feet. We are proposing to move the building face back to ten and a half feet, although there is a front little stairway that will be within, I believe, seven point seven feet. But it's just three stairs, but the building itself is back to ten and a half feet. The other non-conformities, which are the FAR in the lot coverage, I think we're making a significant change to the, in a reduction to the lot coverage. We are reducing FAR, although I will admit it is a slight reduction, but a reduction nevertheless. So I think in doing, in doing those things, we have also moved the property, the houses, as you know, to the center of the lot. We've centered them more. We've pulled them away from the neighbors, created more space. So that's stuff that we've previously gone over. I've also presented material as to why we, the project, is consistent with the goals of the PIOD. You know, again, we're eliminating and reducing non-conformities. We're creating, centering buildings away from neighbors. I think eliminating the closeness of those buildings. We're meeting current environmental regulations, which will reduce and minimize environmental impacts. And we've added value, we will be adding value to both our lot and to the neighborhood. And also, we talked quite a bit last meeting about the, the proposed impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. I presented a lot of pictures showing you the neighborhood, showing you that there are, in fact, other lots. In fact, the lot right next door, one over, has two structures on a single lot. We are surrounded by two and a half, and in some cases, three-story buildings. The general neighborhood, you know, the buildings, there are not a lot of single-story cottages left in the neighborhood. But we did show the examples of the two and a half and three-story houses in the area. But what we mostly showed is that what my client is proposing is, in fact, consistent with what we see in the PIOD today. And in doing so, I do believe we are meeting the goals of that PIOD in reducing non-conformities, reducing density, reducing lot coverage, reducing FAR. I mean, really, quite frankly, although we're building new structures, and I'll talk about height in a minute, overall, these structures are an improvement as is, you know, part of the PIOD, or at least goals of the PIOD. So I, again, I will submit that all of those things that we're doing are, in fact, evidence that we are not significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood. In fact, you know, you've heard me say that a lot of what we're doing is actually beneficial. However, and now I'll get to the meat of the meeting. At the last meeting, I think the board left us with two significant issues. One was really a feeling of, you know, were we impacting the neighborhood in such a way that this doesn't mean to be significantly more detrimental? And we spent a lot of time focusing on impact in terms of height. You know, we've somehow, this term, the twin towers, has been coined. And, you know, there was a lot of questions about, you know, whether these structures would, in fact, be detrimental by, in terms of density, you know, is this going to be dense? The other question, as you'll recall, was whether the provision in your bylaw that says that the board cannot approve a project that would result in a front setback being less than twenty feet unless a closer distance had been pre-established. We did actually go out, and as I said, it was my understanding that it meant that the pre-existing nonperforming home that was there did, in fact, establish that for us. There were questions about, however, whether that establishment of a closer line should be determined by, you know, neighboring properties. So while we waited for a town council direction on that, we did actually go out and do a survey and measure all of the houses along the street. And what we found is, you know, there are houses on our street that are closer than what we're proposing. In fact, the houses next door, they have an elaborate stairway deck configuration that comes right down to the road. There's a shed that's a few feet off the road. So we were poised to prepare a plan in that regard. However, again, we were waiting for town council. It wasn't until this morning, actually, that I, I was informed that the building inspector, and I guess town council, and whoever else was involved in reviewing that, determined that our pre-existing nonperforming front house did, in fact, establish a lesser distance, and so that we could look to that. And therefore, the board is not restricted from approving this, despite the fact that we're less than twenty feet back. So we do, I mean, it really comes down to a pre-existing nonperformance, which establishes that for us. But remember, we have made efforts to try and reduce the nonconformity by getting the face of that building back at least ten and a half feet as compared to the current six feet. And, you know, just to, just, you know, one of the things that's stopping us from going back farther is, you know, we want to maintain a safe distance away from the two structures. And as I will explain shortly, one of the things we have done is, early on, it was suggested, well, couldn't you meet all the setbacks? You know, couldn't you find a way? And at the time, the only two that we did meet were the rear setbacks here and, of course, that front setback. We were able to meet all the others. So we did redesign things. As you see, we've actually removed the rear steps and things that were going to be in the back here so that we could meet the setbacks. So this is now a proposed to be a conforming setback. We had to do some, you know, changes to the interior of the building. But, you know, we have tried to respond to as many of the board's concerns as we can. So we did do that. So I, I, I think we've addressed the question about whether we're allowed to be ten and a half feet here. So what I'd like to do is now discuss the question of impact and density, and whether what we're proposing here is detrimental to the neighborhood by virtue of its density, or that it's overcrowding, or overwhelming, or, you know, significantly detrimentally impacting the neighborhoods. So I'm pretty basic. I always start with the definition. So I did some research on how density is defined and determined. Because again, from what I'm hearing, the board's concern is whether the density of what we're proposing to do here will be significantly detrimental. And I was able to find a number of definitions on density. Density is mass, is mass, is defined by mass and volume. So that d equals m times v. A more understandable definition for me was the state or quality of compactness and closeness and given a particular situation. So density, it can be defined as closeness, you know, compactness. And then lastly, there was actually one that says, density is a measure of how much stuff you're putting in a defined area. And then you can define whether you're dense by putting too much, or if you're not dense by having things not compacted and separated. So density is not just a function of height, but it's a, it's, it's the total volume of the structures and the relationship of those structures to the area and to other structures, where it sits in that area, and again, the relationship to other structures outside of the lot. So I want to look about, look at that. We have discussed at length the fact that our buildings are conforming to the height regulations, but we are, you know, pushing the envelope there. And so, you know, there's been concerns, are you too hot? And is the height of these buildings going to overwhelm the neighborhood and thus be too dense? Well, I know we touched on it at the last meeting, but I think a picture is worth a thousand words. Our structures, and when I say the structures, I'm referring right now to the, to the two-story box, you know, this box here, to the flat roof, okay? And when I look at height and density and massing and scaling, you know, a lot of times you'll look at, well, what is the wall I'm looking at? I'm looking at this solid wall that goes up to a certain height. You know, that's what defines the density. I just want to remind you that the height of our buildings from the ground to the flat roof is twenty-seven point six feet. And where we get to the thirty-four feet are these doghouses. And as you know, the doghouses, you've seen them. They are really just your access to get up onto your roof there. So while, if I'm on, say, this side of this building, and I look up, I will see that roof at twenty-seven feet. And yes, I will probably catch, depending on the angle, I'll catch the side of that doghouse, and I will see it. You know, and in fact, maybe I see this top part of it. But what I don't see is a three, you know, sort of three-story full wall going up to thirty-four feet. It's really the doghouses that dictate our thirty-four feet. The masking and scaling of the building, the full walls, they're only a twenty-seven point six. And, you know, I want to point out that these doghouses, as you can see, in most instances, are sort of placed towards the center of the structure. They're not even on, you know, the edge here, so that when I look this way, I see one, two, three. They're centered in this, in this side, and of course, this is the long side of it. These are approximately, I guess, ten feet, and, but from the front, they're, you know, only five feet wide. So if you're looking from this way at this building, you see this wall, you see this wall, you see the twenty-seven foot height here. You might catch a little fence, but really what you see is this five-foot-wide doghouse. I guess my point I'm trying to make is, because it's, they're doghouses and not a floor, we don't have the full masking and scaling of a thirty-four-foot building. We just, it's kind of like if you have a cupola on your house. You know, you look at the house, and you see the house, the blocks, and then you see the cupola. Yeah, well, the cupola's at a height, but that cupola doesn't, like the doghouse, it doesn't provide that overwhelming massing and scaling. When you start talking about the view from the neighbors, which in many cases, they're twenty-five or thirty feet away, you know, they're going to look over. They're going to see this building, there's no place, and they'll see the doghouse. But the doghouse is not going to be this imposing mass that overwhelms them. So I, I'm saying that the height alone is not, it's not resulting in these buildings being overly dense or imposing on our neighbors. But again, as I said, density is not just a function of height. It's a function of the width, length, depth of the structures. It's a function of how these sit on the lot and, you know, their proximity to each other and their proximity to the neighbors. But remember, we are actually reducing the FAR on this lot with these new structures. We're reducing it slightly, but we're reducing it. So as far as the massing and scaling, I mean, that's a function of a reduction. Lot coverage, as I said, which, which talks to, you know, compactness and density on the lot of the structures, of the footprints, we are reducing that from forty, from thirty-one point two percent down to twenty-four point nine. So I mean, that's a significant reduction in, in, in lot area, excuse me, lot coverage. And if you're reducing your lot coverage, I would suggest that you are reducing the density, the compactness of the structures on your lot, because you've now got more open space, more air between them. And we are pulling them away from our neighbors, and we're putting smaller structures, smaller lot coverage. So in terms of the impact to the density of the neighborhood, you know, we're, we're going to have a structure here and a structure here. And, you know, look around. We're not really any denser than any of this. I mean, we're going to be part of the density, and we even have the benefit of having nothing over here. This house sits almost between these two. These two are both close and on the road. And then as far as this house, we're back far enough with the back building that we're not in direct line. In fact, that one too kind of looks between them. So, you know, from a density perspective, between the reduction in FAR, reduction in lot coverage, reduction in, or increase in setbacks and everything else, and if we look to the definition of density being the, how much stuff we're putting in a given space, we're actually putting less stuff in this space. Again, when you just look at the height and you just look at the numbers, jeez, that seems like a big change. But it's the doghouses, it's not a big change. The other thing is related to height was a question of, well, you know, you're, you're conforming, but you're still going to have an impact on neighbors. You know, you're going to shade them and, and, you know, you're going to disrupt their views. Well, Mr. Legary, actually, as you know, did a quick little sun impact study on the lot. And I'm just going to ask him to take a few minutes just to explain to you what he did and what his results were in terms of how these buildings will shade our neighbors or block our neighbors.
So I basically took a look, and most of the talk is for the rear building, because that was, a lot of the talk of the addition, was it permitted? The closeness over the property line, that was the biggest intensity in the rear. Looking at it just from intensity on the, on the neighbors, I look at what impacts could cross the line and impact the neighbors specifically. Sun isn't always a major factor, and especially on beach areas, you know, if you're going to have decks, use of air. So I did a cross-section of the old building versus our proposed building, just to see how they relate. Obviously, the old building was six inches or so off over the property line. And you'll see that this is actually our worst-case scenario, because our, our house is actually only ten and a half feet off the property line, but that angles away. So the other side is about fifteen, sixteen feet off the property line. This is our work, but you keep in mind, the old structure had this impact across the entire back entirety of the property, because the last house angled with the property line. So our intensity comes right down to the property line. So this is a seventy-one degree sun angle, which is pretty standard in just like a noon time in the summertime. And I just cut an angle of where the old house sits and where, where the new house sits. Our sun angle comes right down pretty much to the property line. You know, I think on our new iteration, this one showed twenty-one foot six. We're, I think we're twenty foot six on, on this other one. But I think we're about six inches or so over the property line, seven inches. And the old one jumped over the property line, I think it was seven foot nine. And that was the entirety of ours. So our sun barely breaks the difference, seven inches, only for about a foot or two. After that, our building angles in towards the lot, and the sun does not come near the property line. So you look at it that way. I also threw a person in there, and I drew in this building because I wanted to show what the potential for a proposed building to be built there. Ten-foot setbacks, thirty feet, five feet high. If somebody built out that structure on that rear lot, this is the type of house you'll see. You'll obviously see the massing difference. If we actually went to thirty-five feet and we actually masked the building out to be a thirty-five-foot-high building, you'll see the difference of, this doesn't look thirty-five feet anymore. It actually looks a lot smaller. So basically, I tried to put in a person in there to give you some sense of scale as if you're on that rear property, in between the building and the property line, it's your yard, you have the enjoyment to use it, how would you feel? So in the old, in the previous existing condition, you'd be in shade, and you'd have a building directly next to you. So you'd be basically in an alleyway. You'd have ten feet, one building to the right, one building to the left, no sunshine to speak of. The new structure, you'll see that you would have, you know, if you're standing in the middle of the setback, you'd have fifteen feet to the right. You'd actually be able to see through that building, because it's now on piling. So the sense of space is going to feel a lot bigger, because you don't just have a solid wall right next to you. You actually have fifteen feet there, you can see through to the next street over, and as well, you are sitting in sunlight. So there's a pretty good sun impact there. And, you know, just when I was going through this process, I also drew in the old building versus the new building. And what you'll see is our, our height is almost the same as, you know, it's an estimated recreation. I took the old photo of, of the burned-out house. And you can kind of take six-foot-eight doorways, which are standard, and you can count clapboards, and you can measure across to get roof pitches. So I reconstructed, you'll see here, this is a reconstruction elevation of the previous house based on, you know, the assessor's database, tracking just sizes of windows and doors and roof pitches. We came up with about twenty foot, twenty, what was it? Twenty-seven foot six to the ridge of that building. And you'll see, you can get the height, the step back of that building from the old building from the assessors that'll give you the, you know, how far back that second floor is. And from what you'll see, our building's twenty-seven feet, their building's twenty-seven and a half feet. And the face of the highest part of both buildings are about the same distance off the property line. I would say ours is less, because we angle away from the property line. We do not follow with the property line. So it gives you a sense, you'll see that basically, our building footprint is almost in the same area as the previous building footprint, except for we just cut off the basically last, you know, ten feet or eleven feet of the rear of the building. And then in terms of massing, just one thing to throw out there, we've been looking at FAR. So FAR is just the volume of the rooms. The things that we're not taking into account that we cut off is decks. So our decks are within our FAR. So our decks, we wanted to screen them in and cover them. So they have, let's just say, they have twenty-five hundred, I forget what the number is, but if they have twenty-five hundred square feet of FAR, they also have, you know, a thousand square feet of decks that are completely separate. Our FAR includes our decks, because if we want to cover the decks and be able to screen them in. So when we say they were twenty-five hundred square feet, we might only be twenty-two hundred square feet, because we had to actually count our screen porches as part of FAR, even though they are not. So our buildings, including the decks, is less than just their building volume alone. And we cut off, just this one deck alone is eight feet by thirty-one feet. So that's a massive building structure being ripped off, as well as we have flat roofs, and we do not incorporate any attic space, any roof structures whatsoever. So the previous building did a pitch roofs, that includes some attic space, some extra pitch. So there's actually, when you talk about built structure, our FAR is smaller, but our FAR includes the decks. So the actual built structure and volume of the actual frames is a lot less.
Does the FAR include the third-floor decks from your buildings?
So, no, because they're not covered in basically, yeah. Yeah, but you'll see in the sunstone, so a thirty-one-foot deck, you know, ten feet in the air that creates shade is a lot more intense than a railing that you can kind of see from the ground, but you're really at the angle with the overhangs, you're really barely going to see them. So it tops intensity, it is a lot.
My only other question was, what about the difference in the first house, the front house?
Yeah.
Fourteen feet versus the thirty-four feet as it relates to sun shadow?
So it hasn't really come up too much. I mean, most of the focus was on the rear.
Yeah.
Because the sun shadow in the summertime is going to be kind of right, kind of shooting back. In the morning time, you'll get a little bit to the left, but, you know, to the left, we did do an analysis. You know, there is an intensity on the left as well. I mean, they have two structures per, the same as us, they have two structures. We did look at the house to the right, it's actually three stories. So it actually has almost like a finished basement, has a second floor, and it actually has a third floor. So they're taller than us, to the left, they're about the same, but they have a pretty good space to the left. And we have twelve, we have twelve feet plus five to the doghouse. So we have seventeen feet on the left, and they also have seventeen feet. And, yeah, and then part of the setback, we did do, we started the analysis, but to the left, they, you know, there's a whole deck, there's a shed, there's a whole bunch of like built structures all out front. So, you know, although we did get that decision, I actually looked at the average. And if you count the deck system that goes right out to the street, and then you count the second house, we actually are in line. Our ten feet, they're about twenty feet to the right, and they're about one feet to the left. the left, and we're ten foot six. So either way you cut it, we did get that determination, but we are in line. And the sun is, it, basically in the morning, there'll be a little bit, but we're, our, our top floor is seventeen feet off. And keep in mind, if we didn't have flat roofs with a deck, most likely we'd have a pitch roof, which you gotta think, if you have two stories and a pitch roof, that's gonna be a lot higher and a lot more intense than one short dog house that doesn't run the length, because a pitch roof would be of the same height, running the entire length. So at the end of the day, it's about as much.
There is a significant difference between fourteen and thirty-four.
The front house?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, we're never gonna get every dimension. It's part of FEMA. You know, it's, it's, as you go up, you guys must hear this every night, all the time, it, it, it's kinda part of the game, but the end of the day is, what is the impact on the neighborhood? Everything in the matrix shows that this is gonna be a much far less, you know, impact. And it also depends too, because the front might be a little bit higher, but the back was the same, so it's really not, not too much different, so. And we pulled it back, the existing house is what, like a foot off? So we pulled that house way back, so it's not gonna be too, too much different, but yeah, a little bit, so. Oh, and then, um, just in terms of neighborhood, I did do an analysis, I think you guys probably saw this, but the neighborhood, I think early on, it was said that, you know, we didn't really fit in with the neighborhood. This neighborhood is about a fifty-fifty mix of multifamilies. I counted at least ten units in multifamily structures, and there's eight singles. So just from what I can see, there's at least ten units in multifamilies, and this one up front, I actually suspected more, I just couldn't get too much off the assessors. So, so in terms of neighborhood, it seems to be, yeah.
Thanks, I appreciate that. You were able to get a new very one, Mr. Daly made it a flat tire when I came up. All right, so I, at this point, I would like to just touch base on the new plans that I gave you. They, the ink may still be wet. They were literally just delivered to me at five o'clock. The reason we waited to do the remo, the revised plan was because we were waiting for a determination in terms of that front setback, you know, whether our house created the, the, the closer, or whether we needed to do this study of the neighborhood. So until we had that answer, could conduct the study and determine whether we met the average, and, and see if we could, you know, modify accordingly, we quite frankly had to wait until we got an answer. And as I said, I got the answer this morning, I called our engineer, I said, you know, we don't have to complete that average setback that Ben talked about, but we, I do need you to fix the plan. So what this plan reflects is just a couple of changes. As I mentioned earlier, in keeping with the board's request, we modified the rear structure, so that we are now completely conforming as to the rear setback. There was a question raised about the location of the propane tank, and I think it was our neighbors that asked that the propane tank be at least ten feet from all property lines, so we did move our propane tank back here to make sure that it was a minimum of ten feet off the rear lot line. And again, at least for now, that rear section is underdeveloped, so, you know, we, we didn't even put it on a side where we had an abiding neighbor, but we tucked it back here, and we met the requested ten feet. The other change, quite frankly, I think, then here's our other propane tank, relative same location. Thus, this, that's really the only changes that we've made to our plan from when we last met. Again, we made sure that we defined the fact that although we were able to get the, the face of the building back to ten and a half feet, I do have three stairs here to deal with that, you know, eat up two feet, seven inches of that, so the, the front of the steps is actually about seven, seven, but it's still a long way from having the, the entirety of the front building six feet off. So we're still, with these changes and with the movement of this house, we're still able to maintain a, a, well, just a fraction under fifteen-foot setback from the closest point between the buildings, which is certainly in keeping with National Fire Code and applicable state code, and again, the fire department was, did not have a negative comment with respect to our separation. And again, I think that's partially due to the fact that we're sprinkling, using fire-resistant siding, so we have done everything we can, and certainly I've, I've tried to provide the board all the information to show you that at the end of the day, this project is not going to be significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood. And while, again, I do understand that the neighbors and some of the board members have a little concern, or have some concern about our height and the fact that these buildings could overwhelm everyone, I, I'm hoping that the information we proposed tonight shows you that really what's driving our height are the dog houses, not the, the physical mass of the building, which is in one case, the same as the old building, and as was pointed out, the new building goes from fourteen, you know, if you say the twenty-eight, so it's doubling it, but recall, a good portion of that is the fact that we are, you know, pilings. You know, it, the pilings, I think, are six feet of that. So in terms of, you know, the, the box itself being raised, you know, it's, it's not really, I don't think the analysis is saying where you're going from fourteen to thirty-four is representative of the, the visual impact change that we're making, so I don't know what more we can do. We've reduced, or eliminated non-conformities, we've, we've moved the buildings away from our neighbors, we've made them extra safe from a fire perspective, we meet your height requirement, and, and we only get close to it because of these dog houses, which don't provide the massing and scaling that the, you know, our neighbors' homes that are two and a half and three stories high provide. This, this, I've said it a number of times, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, but I think, like many of the projects we see, once this is built and it's sitting in the neighborhood, you know, the neighbors are not, are gonna see that it doesn't overwhelm them. It's not like we have anyone sitting in a third-floor window looking down on anybody. We don't. I mean, you know, our people are gonna be, you know, for the most part, when they're living in the building, they're gonna be at this level, so they're gonna be at twenty, you know, in the twenty-five to twenty-eight-foot range looking out windows, which is gonna put them level with the houses on either side. Granted, somebody standing up on the deck is gonna be a little higher, but, you know, that's, that's not massing and scaling, that's just somebody standing higher than the next person, but. I, I, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have and.
Okay, well.
Address your concerns.
So appreciate the update. There were some items that we had asked town council and/or the building inspector to clarify, and those were, in terms of my notes, one of the things that we were gonna confirm was confirm the grading around the building, attempt the height.
Yep.
And it looks like the newer plan, the graphics are a little clearer. That back house sits approximately a, a flat pad of sixteen feet, and the front house is, there's a slight difference from fourteen foot at one corner to fifteen feet at the other corner, and so there's like a six-inch difference between, a one-foot difference, so you'd have to take the half of that as the average, and it's just making sure that that's accounted for in the building height. That was one. Two, the number of bedrooms, and in terms of our Newbury bylaws, it just says the portion about adding, the ability to add one bedroom, and then it doesn't really elaborate if there's two structures and what that means on the site, but understanding from the building inspector that Newbury Port has ruled, and he would concur, that it would be one bedroom per structure, which has been previously, previously ruled in Newbury Port, so that's how he would see that or follow that. Establishment of lot lines and setbacks in terms of existing buildings creating, existing buildings, locations, create, then establish, establish setbacks for non-conforming uses. We've been through this before on other lots, and so that, that was clear, that, that means you have a right to use that existing established line. It does not, that, that's just one right, and then the second part of that was, well, the second part of establishing that line was, was the request for conforming to, conforming to the setback requirements, of which moving or revising or altering the structure in the back changes that to a ten-foot setback. There was the topic of fire that was brought up, it is not the jurisdiction of the zoning board to determine fire safety, other than to note that the buildings must, obviously must meet the Massachusetts State Building Code requirements for construction, density. There is, there is no definition within the zoning bylaws for density in Newbury, but again, in terms of definitions you provided, or the definitions that one can conclude, the two different references are seemingly accurate for assessment of density. I don't know if anybody looked up and had something.
I, I did look up for land use, and it did say the number of buildings on an acre, number of buildings per acre. What's the definition of density in land use?
The existing condition, and you did provide a section in a sketch that shows the pre-existing structure and its, its height. I don't know if in the package that we received, that we received other existing floor plans for the two structures.
Thank you, Chuck.
We did, 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 I think for FAR purposes, we did have to recreate, I think the front house was broken up into kitchen, living room, stuff like that, for FAR purposes. Let me find the.
Trying to read my notes, I think, yes, we did provide FAR, we did say, yes, we understood that they were there. I think when I look at the FAR plan, it says front house, third floor. And then there's the rear house, which has the first floor, second floor, rear house, third floor.
Okay, in terms of FAR purposes, I had to capture that platform at the top, so it's like nine feet.
So the, the rear structure had three levels, stone, baby hat, you got a photo that shows it.
Yeah.
It's inaccurate.
Yeah.
But the plan of the front house, it says third floor, four hundred and forty square squ, square feet FAR, and there's only one plan that we're seeing. What was the existing structure?
The existing structure on the front?
Yeah.
That's, that's the single floor.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
It says third floor on the drawings, which is.
Okay, hold on. Oh, yeah, the front house, third floor, it should have been only four.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry. That is the FAR now.
Okay, and reading my notes, that's, there's some confusion, I just.
Sorry. Okay. Yep.
And then I have one other additional question, that in terms of the site plan, it does say that this is in a, it's not in any special floodplain zone.
Right.
And I did look on the map, and certainly it's, it's carved out in terms of the different zones.
Yeah.
So the reasoning for putting it up on piles and the height of piles was decided or driven by, by what?
Conservation, Wetlands Protection Act, because we're on a barrier dune, we have to, if you are, if you are, you know, raising a structure like this, you have to make sure that sand and, and air can flow. It's really for sand movement. But it also provides us extra protection from flooding, if there is flooding, we, we won't be impacted, but we are required by, you know, state and local conservation laws to provide for sand movement on a barrier beach.
Understood, and that, and that question, though, what is driving the eight feet under the, of the piles as opposed to four feet, which would make the buildings lower, because you're not in the, in the flood zone, it doesn't require you to be that high?
Parking.
And how much parking is proposed on site?
Two, two spots under one building and one spot under the other building, and then the driveways.
All right, so in, in understanding the, the parking, which is the question I have, is there a need for the clamshell driveway and parking on the east-west side of the front building against the property line?
Well, as, as you've heard, the neighbors state multiple times, they have great concerns about people parking on the street. As we all know, parking is, is a premium on the island, and we have an opportunity here to provide, quite frankly, some extra parking. I mean, one of the big concerns about the neighbors was, you know, you got two structures on a single lot, so can you just imagine the total number of people that might be here on any given day? So that driveway on the left, you know, it gives us a couple extra spaces. I mean, we, I, I mean, you heard the neighbors. I don't care what they do, there's gonna be parking on the street, it's a nightmare for us all. Well, we figured a way to get us a couple extra spots, so we're gonna have, you know, three spots available on the front house, one under and a couple to the side, and then we'll have the two under in the back, and, you know, you could theoretically stack a number there, so, you know, we, we almost, we're providing close to, you know, three to four spaces per unit, which two is required, and we're actually providing extra space, so there will be no, you know, I, I would suggest, there should be no parking on the street generated by these homes. They have parking for visitors.
Additionally, if you've been down ten street, it's a dead-end street, it's very narrow, I think it's only sixteen feet, so any type of car, cars parking on that, on the street would be a massive detriment to the neighborhood if they do have true concerns of it a hundred feet away, especially in the summertime, so people going down there thinking it's a, it's, there's no, not knowing it's a turnaround, so getting cars off the street, I know the neighbors' concerns about that, that's what we're trying to maximize that.
Okay, and then I guess just to answer my question, that the, the height of the buildings, or at least the pilings, is set by the desire to add parking underneath the buildings?
Partially for the sand and partially for the parking, yes.
Any, have any questions on the board?
And just the other thing, when we were designing that, quickly, sorry, that the FEMA just changed again in January, I had properties that weren't in the FEMA flood zone six months ago, I mean, eight months ago, they now are. The island is barrier island, it's only getting worse, especially with, as you see what's happening on Plum Island, so we wanted to build it up with mechanicals and didn't wanna, we wanted to be as far up as we could, the flood issues were, we continue to have, and they're saying anywhere from three to four feet potentially in the next thirty years.
Thank you.
Um, you know, one thing still puzzles me, maybe it's a question for the board more than the appellant, but, but last time, I think you said that we were applying under D special permit, that's where we're going with this thing. that's where we're going with this thing, right? But then there's also been talk about, in fact, I saw a letter about it somewhere, about the building commissioner giving us an extension, giving you an extension because there was a fire and COVID and stuff like that. Did that, did that happen or am I mistaken?
No, no. What, the question is that when you have a home, a non-conforming home, that's consumed by fire, or, you know, disasters.
The mall by the town or whatever.
You, you have a two-year period in which to, you know, reconstruct the, the building and be allowed to do so as a pre-existing nonperformance. In other words, you can, you can, you know, rely on those nonconformities.
And, and not abandon the use.
And not abandon the use.
Okay.
So with COVID, you know, COVID has had an impact on the, on the timeframe for getting this redone, and under the COVID Extension Act, that was, you know, we've got an extra 435 days on our two years. Plus, I believe we filed a request with the building inspector for an extension. You can do that too, so kind of being a little.
Another year or so, yeah.
Yeah. Being paranoid, I.
Please check with the building inspector, he somehow noted that you needed to get started by August.
That could very well be true, so.
Unless we get a written, I think he said, I think he said, right now, we don't need a written, but.
He was a verbal, he said, if it gets to the point, you need a written one, I'll give you a written one.
Yeah. Like, yeah, technically, right now, our timeframe is.
I was just pressing the issue, we were just talking about that. He mentioned that. I have that as a note.
It's good to know.
So, so that's the part that confuses me. So that, that's under section E. So is this kind of an Al Karp thing, that we take the timeframe from section E and we take the special permit section from section D? Or are we restricted to doing the burnt house under E and the other house under D? How are we doing this?
Well, I think the reconstruction under the E, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my coffee, but I think that speaks to, you know, whether you want to, if you want to come in and just recreate the, you know, rebuild what was there. Whereas what we're, what we're looking for is a special permit to allow us to, you know, reconstruct, or finding from the board that reconstructing it in the proposed manner.
Well, that's where I'm going with this, because it seems like that would solve, at least from the neighbor's perspective, a lot of the height problems, because it clearly says if we're going under E, then you're stuck with the existing height, 24 feet or whatever he said it was. And it spells it out pretty clearly. But if we're going by D, then we can go with the 35 foot, but maybe the clock is already, can we take the clock from one and that's the question?
The, the use and the time period is overall the, the special permit in terms of what is allowed by, by right, in terms of, it's the same basically three times over with the subtlety of not exceeding total volume, not exceeding height is E. That's by right. F is so as to exceed the total volume and to exceed the height. And what D is setting up is if you're not totally demolishing, but you're altering, reconstructing, extension, changes such as to the extent. So when it says reconstruction, it doesn't mean total demolition. So D is you have an existing building and you're changing it, altering, revising it. E is you are not exceeding what is there, so you have a right to build if you don't over, over exceed the existing limits that were already set. And under F, you are seeking rebuilding after finding. So you need a finding for non-conforming, single or two-family residential structure may be demolished and rebuilt, or rebuilt and after destroyed or damaged by a catastrophe so as to exceed the total volume of all demolished or destroyed structures on the locus and/or exceed the height of the tallest demolished or destroyed structure on the locus upon a finding from the Board of Appeals. So we are under 97 dash four, D, five, F, because, well, you're not actually exceeding, right?
Well, they're exceeding the catastrophe one, but that doesn't apply apparently?
We're actually building smaller volume, not height.
Right. So you're, you're still under F, and then it says such structure shall not be reworked, shall not be rebuilt, not more than two years after such a finding. The fact that they're, yeah, Peter has said that he is, is okay with the timeline.
Okay. Was it the timeline or was the?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure, again, more questions on the board.
You have two structures. One is existing and it's non-conforming, existing, it's there, and they're exceeding the height. So that's clearly under F. One is a catastrophe, the fire, and they happen not to be, so I wouldn't say, I think when we write this up, that we'd be under a single F section, and I wouldn't seem to slice and dice it, because I don't think there's any difference or benefit for.
Standard of review for the finding is the same.
Yes.
And I did, I do, I do, knowing sometimes there's these nuances, when I, when I do apply, what I did first off, as you know, I did get a letter from Peter telling me what we needed to apply, bar under which, and I did that, which is why it's the 4D, and that's what Peter had directed. But you'll note in my applications, I always put, and any other permit or approval that the board fee, you know, finds necessary in order to accomplish this. And I learned that a few years back, that courts actually, because what was happening is someone was erroneously applying under D, and then it determined, oh, it's supposed to be under E, and the public notice said D, so you have to start over. So someone, a spot of the meeting came up with the proposition to always make sure you include that, so if there is a typo or even a, you know, you're, you're, you're seeking under the wrong thing, the board can choose to, and to, to look at it under that section, and then the neighborhood or the butters have been deemed to get the correct notice, that, hey, it could be under D, or it could be under any other section that the board feels necessary, so.
Understood. Thank you.
We, we have done, you know, early on, I mean, this is obviously a pretty complicated, you know, different scenario than we're used to seeing. So we did meet early and often with Peter to, to get to the soup and nuts of what this, how to do this, and again, we are following his direction.
Yeah, just on F2, as Greg was mentioning, it says, where use shall not be substantially more detrimental to the existing nonconforming structure, or use to the neighborhood. So it's both the neighborhood and, to my interpretation, both the neighborhood and the existing structure, which would be the front structure.
Right. But what was, the nonconformities of the front structure are setbacks? It's within the F A R, it's within the height?
Okay. So nonconforming?
Right. I mean, if, if you had a structure that somehow exceeded 35 feet, and you were looking to build and exceed the height of 35 feet, then you might say that that is more detrimental to the neighborhood because it exceeds the limits of what the rest of the neighborhood is. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. We do have, and so we'll continue with public comment, and we do have an email public comment that we'd like to read into the record.
And this is from Linda Wood, sharing some comments after watching the recording of the main meeting. Just about everyone residing in 10th Street is our longtime year-round resident who remember voting for the water sewer project and adopting, adopting the P I O D with the understanding of the restrictions. The board's acknowledgement of the density and intensity issue is appreciated as our neighbors will be changed with construction of two towers. It does seem hard to, for a non-expert in such matters myself, to understand how a 219 square foot cottage could morph into a large imposing residence, close to another imposing residence under the P I O D rules. Regarding the comments that houses on islands are the work of the future because they allow air and sand flow, we have often watched areas under the homes get lattice work, then walls, then doors, then garage doors, allowing no air or sand flow out of this habit, we wonder. Granting variances does not open the door to larger undesirable development. Please continue to consider the impact we're delegate on.
We've had many debates about what stuff or presented plan seemingly, supposedly might be or become. It's not exactly our jurisdiction. It is the building inspector, it is the enforcement officer. If somebody has an issue with a zoning code or believes somebody is, is above and beyond or doing something outside the bounds of building or zoning codes, it is, that needs to be directed to the building inspector as he's the enforcement officer. I'm not sidestepping his concern, but I mean, we've, we've had that before, and we have reviewed this with town council in terms of understanding what is presented and then reading into what it might be. As much as we're trying to protect and hold to the bylaws, we've had that discussion before in the past. Okay? Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? And you've spoken before?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. You state your name, please, and address?
Yeah. My name is Carol Sanchez. I have an interest at 13th Street and have lived there and back and forth, and I know all the neighbors. And I've talked to a lot of the neighbors, and some of them are, you know, afraid to come and ask me to come and kind of state their concerns. I'm not an engineer. I've done as much research as I could and as we all have, so I do have some notes that they asked me to bring forth. In terms of the, the density, I think someone said that the density is kind of a footprint, but us as neighbors, we want you to think about density as, you know, like three-dimensional, because it does affect our, our neighborhood. You know, it's not just the footprint, and it's too bad that the laws or what, what you have to govern by are not specific, but I guess I'm asking you to think outside the box a little bit and consider density to go up and not just the footprint. In terms of the two families, there, I think the gentleman said that there were lots of two families around. Olive 8th Street is a dead end road, and I'm pretty sure there's no two families there. 10th Street is a dead end road, and there's a two family, but it's on Northern Boulevard. It's on the cross. 14th 10th Street, at 14th Street, there could be one there, and then 16th Street, there's only one, again, on Northern Boulevard. So the two families are on Northern Boulevard, where there's plenty of parking, plenty of depth for things like fire trucks and everything else that could go on when you have two families. So I, I would ask you to do a little research on that, and this would be very unusual, to be where it is on a very small road. Yes, parking on the street, you know, is going to happen. I know that if they lift it up to 8B, they got two cars here, two cars there, and another, but it happens. Where people have parties, people have company, this is a very, very small street, and the two structure thing just adds for more traffic, more visitors, just scariness. So insufficient parking, we all would prefer that it be one building. I'm glad that they're thinking about getting a sprinkler system and all that, which is great. I wish we all could do that, because it would all be safer, and every time there's a fire on Plum Island, it doesn't end up being a complete loss, because that's what happens. But we, I think what, what we all would prefer is for it to be one structure, that's what I heard over and over again from my neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Attorney Paul Novak for a number of any director butter and several other brothers in the neighborhood. When we had the last seven meetings, I understood that they were going to be updating plans. I don't, I was handed a plan and thank the board tonight, I did receive a plan from Doug earlier today, but we can't make a determination on whether this conforms to the, any of the requirements, the F A R requirements. We do not have any room, we continue not to have any room dimensions, we don't have any complete footprints now with revised building layouts, we don't have the height layouts, we don't have the exact parking lot layouts with respect to that, so we just have this one sheet. It doesn't list anything on here. And they have changed the configuration since the earlier prints, from my understanding. And those, that information was not on the earlier prints. If the board shall approve this, we will be appealing it, because we cannot make a determination whether or not this plan that was submitted here complies with the P I O D requirements, because we simply don't have the information necessary to make those calculations. All we have is a memo section on the upper right-hand section that shows areas.
So did you not receive a set of, of building plans?
And it wasn't on, it wasn't on the website either, as far as the attachments. I've been checking on a regular basis, so I do not have any of that information. I just have this one document, just one page that I received tonight, that's all I have.
Okay. Understood.
We need adequate time to basically evaluate this before we can say fine or be able to be in a position to see whether or not it complies.
Yes. You need adequate time. These drawings, whether they're hard copy or whether they were digital, we've had for three months now. And the board has had them and has had time to review them and understand them.
But we have never seen, we've seen those, that are on, if those are the plans that were digitally filed, we have them. That, this information that I'm saying right now is not on those plans.
Right. And we, we, okay, understood your point.
That in order to make an evaluation under the P I O D, the specific requirements of the, of the ordinance, you need this information. For example, overhangs. Do you see anywhere on those plans where they're showing your overhangs? The pictures that were provided tonight show substantial overhangs on both structures on the side views that were prepared, they're simply on here. There's nothing here to indicate how far off those overhangs are with respect to the building.
The drawings are scaled and they're on, the drawings are here.
That is the committed total configuration. I don't think they have configured, what I'm saying is, they've got their numbers that are summed up, I don't believe they factored that in. I don't believe they factored the walkways in, the decks, the stairs.
We did.
Well, I don't see it added up. It's not added, it's not laid out on the, on the most.
They're on the plan.
Okay. We just haven't seen those there. When I reviewed the plans online, they were not there. We specifically sent this information. It's not like we're waiting for this minute. We sent this request over to attorney Doug.
Shane, you have, you have these drawings?
We have, it was electronically filed, I'm not sure if it's that same exact set, but when we reviewed those exact drawings that are electronically filed, this information was not on me. We gave several requests for this, and I thought the board had requested that, it may be the con, con board, but somebody had also said, oh, yeah, we're going to get that information to you. It has not. We've been checking with the board. All I'm saying tonight is, we want to be in favor of, of something that the neighbors can live with, but we don't, simply don't have this information. So I'm just pointing that out to the board. I don't know, I'm glad to have, if we review everything, we don't have. Now, whether something can go, and, and I don't think we should be, have to do that from previous projects that I've worked on, the engineering firm, and they have a good, very good engineer, should basically have all this listed out for us, so we can make a quick determination on that. The other reason it's important in this particular instance, they are adding substantially to the volume of that front house, and I still question, I don't believe we're here tonight before the appropriate code section. I believe that this is going to require a zoning variance, because when you get in to going up to that type of distance on the front, where you are, you're adding basically volume to that front building. It's only one story. I don't see where they get the 14 feet. If you walk there and you see the photographs, there's.
So, so under F, you're allowed to exceed.
Right.
They can exceed up to the limit of the bylaw.
Right.
If their roof, the mean height of the highest roof is 35 feet or below, they have the right to do it.
Not if it's, not if it's in a, if it's a, this is where I think we picked up on the code sections. If it's under the earlier code section where it's not a complete destruction here and it's a voluntary improvement of the property, that doesn't exist now. You're creating all this new volume in that front structure.
Under F, they are demolished, catastrophe or demolition. So one house burned down and the others being demolished.
But it's intentionally being demolished and I think there's a fine line between those two statutes. I'm just raising that point that I don't believe that you can add this type of volume to that front house. Now, if they look, if you look at that section and say we can.
Sorry, but we, this is what we do every single time.
Right.
And this is when someone demolishes a house and they want to rebuild it.
Right.
They all should take it away and they build it up. And usually they build it up to the limits.
Right.
And that's what, I don't understand what.
Well, the concern here is you can, and if we were, we wouldn't have this discussion if they were building it up to the limits on one building conforming to those zoning requirements. They're not. They've only got a 10-foot sit back on the front of that house on the most recent plans. Further, it shows only seven feet from the street plan. And I point out again, now with the revised plans here, they do not show, they mentioned to you tonight about parking. There's no spaces that are shown on this plan. How can you have two spots in a front house when it's only 10 feet off the street? A legal spot is nine by 18 or approximately the application, so this is all legal spot.
It's been figured. The reason the buildings are eight feet above on pilings is so they can park under it. If you'd like the applicant to come up and draw parking spaces on the site, they can do that. But I think we're looking at this and you usually don't have applicants draw carved spaces. We count them and we can measure them and assume them, but it's not, I guess it's not a requirement that is specifically listed in the instructions. It could be added to the site plan to convey or confirm exactly how many spaces are on there. I think if you look at this and look at the dimensions of 10 feet and then 49 feet, you can understand that there are two, four spaces in the front and one, two, you can count three, three spaces for the back house. And you're welcome, I mean, we've all got bigger plans, so you can pick one of the plans if you'd like and have one of our plans and we can share one plan.
Okay, and just a quick point out, I know they raised tonight, I'm gonna give a brother a copy of this. This is NFPA 13B, the International Fire Code, which is down for sprinkling. I just, I apologize to the board, I only have one copy for you tonight.
That's, that's okay because we're not.
Well, they referenced it on safety and I think it does appear to the PIOD overlay. I just wanna point this out to the board just for further information because I think it affects a lot of properties and proposals down here. If you look in the, on the second page down below, on administration, it sets forth the purpose, under 1.2.2, a sprinkler system designed and installed in accordance with this standard shall be expected to prevent flashover, total involvement in the room of fire origin where sprinkled and to improve the chance for occupants to escape ought to be evacuated. Nowhere does it state that this is gonna minimize the fire potential here. And if you have a fire that starts on the exterior of these buildings, you're gonna have a complete spread. This is only to allow the people to get out of the building?
Yes.
For sprinkling, I'm just pointing that out. Secondarily, the fires that we've had there, and I just wanted to request that, did the board look, take a look at the actual videos that we have submitted on the fires they had there on Plum Island?
We do, but it is not our jurisdiction. If this finding for the use and the location and the FAR and the lot coverage and the height meet the intent or for the non-conforming conditions that we feel that is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, then we would provide a finding for the project that's submitted to us. It then goes back to the building inspector and they still have to go get a building permit.
I understand.
So in getting the building permit, they need to prove that they meet everything within the Massachusetts State Building Code that is required.
But that has nothing to do with the PIOD and I think your board has the exclusive jurisdiction on saying, from the stance of, does this project affect the neighborhood quality of life and the density on a highly regulated barrier beach? And I think if you look at the actual potential here, going from, I don't know where they get the 14 feet. And I would also point out that they're arguing, well, we have that setback. There, I don't believe that that plan is showing the actual configuration of the location of the existing dwelling and the height on that building. You know, they put 14 feet down. And the photographs submitted earlier to this board, I would suggest that that height may be eight feet at most with respect to that first building. So I think.
In terms of an existing condition, in terms of the section of which we're being asked to judge the proposed plans, under F, the catastrophe or demolition, rebuilding after a finding, a non-conforming, single or two-family residential structure may be demolished and rebuilt, demolished and rebuilt, or rebuilt after destroyed or damaged by a catastrophe, so has to exceed the total volume of all demolished or destroyed structures on the locus and/or exceed the height of the tallest demolished or destroyed structure on the locus. So they're have, seeking a finding to exceed what was there. And then the next judgment is, are they within the limits of the PIOD dimensional requirements?
Right, but with respect to that, I think the twist comes in, when you just read that, it says single, we're not dealing with that entity. You're saying a single or two-family house.
Yes, and Plum Island is riddled with uniqueness and there are, and it's been verified that there are two non-existing, non-conforming structures on the lot. And as by right, they existed and because one was demolished by the demand of the building inspector, he has recognized, he has recognized that it existed. If somehow somebody took down one of the structures on a site and two years passed and then they came back and said, well, I used to have two structures, the use would have lapsed and the right would have been gone. So if there's something within the timing of what the building inspector demanded, but by his demand, he's noted the acceptance that there were two existing non-conforming structures on the site. And, and the zoning clearly says that if the structures were there, then they're there by right. And if there is nothing in our bylaws that I know of that says that even though somebody had two structures, that there can only be one structure, if it was, you know, a new site and it needed to meet the requirements, just the general requirements of town zoning, then that's different. And site plan review is different for a new development in terms of their requirements and their requirements for a single structure on a legitimate parcel.
Right, but I think the argument here that would be made would be, it's not the fact that we're aiming and objecting to two structures, the front structure, they're proposing a substantial increase in density to that structure, more so than what exists now. And where you've got that density change, where you've got the front and you've got the back on a 5,600 square foot lot, that that clearly can be, it's in a real gray area with respect whether or not this board should be approving that type of an arrangement where we have the high wind and barrier beach conditions on Plum Island. And I think that what we're just getting back to at this point is, with respect to the plans, I still have, even on that sheet that you have, do you have room sizes listed on those plans?
There's room sizes and, and the back for square footage that lists the FAR.
Okay, I haven't seen that. How about blocks, decks, stairs and patios?
There's a set of elevations and a set of.
But there's nothing, there's not, no dimensions exist on ours, right?
No, but if the drawing is drawn to scale and we put a scale to it and check it, if the drawings are not, like if the drawings are presented on eight and a half by 11 or odd sheets and they're not to scale, then you can't, you obviously can't scale them. If they're sent to us and they're digital, there isn't.
Are those online? I don't believe those that have it electronically filed. I just, it's the first time I've seen this.
Can you tell me if this is back, is it online?
I believe I emailed that out, but I can check that. It's the original submission we emailed out to the entire team.
I just, I'm not sure if there's any where those exact room dimensions on any of the plans that are.
I believe they are, I believe I do have the digital copy of it, I think I sent them.
Those were on the original package. And they've been, that building has not changed. We removed the back stairs if anything, that's, but the same, the footprint and we define that coverage in that, in those plans, so. Regardless of the room sizes, they haven't changed either, but the footprint of the building and the size of the floors have not changed at all. And those have been on, those are submitted months ago.
Keep in mind, our FAR, if we just took the roof off those two decks, would be drastically less. The only reason why we're maxing out the FAR is because we chose to have a roof cover on those decks. If all I did was cut that roof off, our FAR would go down by about 300, 400 square feet. So we are living area quite a bit. We're about 300, 400 square feet less. The only reason why we're maxing out is because we chose to cover the deck, so.
But, but the measure of FAR, which defines living space, once you put the, so it's still living space, it's just a decked living space as opposed to a bedroom. But the way the board has to look at it, it's all counted as far.
But apples to apples, I didn't take any FAR from a deck from the previous, but we have, some of our FAR is a deck, so our actual living space is a lot smaller than what was there in terms of like the clothing.
Here's included on those plans.
It is, yes.
And those are the plans that are gonna be submitted to the limits.
Those, the plans that, if I could, Mr. Chair, the plans that were submitted originally met all the requirements of the board's, you know, submission requirements. It does show, it calculates lot coverage. Now, I'm not sure, Mr. Novak, Attorney Novak, whether, you know, engineers normally put, you know, the walkway is four feet wide by 28 feet. I don't, I've never seen that level of detail, but what the engineer does is he calculates the area of all of those in putting together his lot coverage determination. Then he reports lot coverage. So, you know, we don't really go to say, well, are we increasing walkways and reducing decks? We just say, in terms of lot coverage, what are we doing? And in this case, our proposed project, including all components that are counted in lot coverage, is being significantly reduced.
What about the overhangs?
Our, the overhangs are shown in the original architectural plans and they are included in the determination of all of the proposed setbacks. So, and in terms of, you know, in terms of this revised plan, which I, as I don't know if you heard earlier, we just did this today, but I did wanna get it to you right away, so I sent it to you.
If, if the overhangs do not or exceed the requirements, you will, you wouldn't have an issue of bringing them back, would you, to the minimum?
No.
No, they're, what is it, 16 inches or something?
It's for visual appeal, I mean, we, so overhangs would cover into lot coverage. So we, just so you know, I could have got, the only reason why we're this low is conservation's request was, we know you by right have the ability, but because it's on a barrier beach, we'd like to see you pull some of that back. So in terms of overhangs, I mean, we're grasping at a little bit of straws because I have, you know, hundreds of feet.
We're not, I'm giving that, you're entitled to propose whatever you want. We just wanna be able to look at a final copy of plans and to make that determination legally.
With the exception of the changes that are shown on this new plan that I sent to you, which were the elimination of the stairs in the back, the relocation of the, or showing the proposed location of the propane tanks at a 10-foot minimum, as I think you suggested, this, this plan is identical to the plan that we've been looking at. And this zoning metrics is, you know, again, stamped by a surveyor, this gives you the information of what our existing situations are and what our proposed are, so.
I don't doubt those, I'm just saying we need to be able to confirm and the board would like to know because ultimately you go to a building inspector, he's gonna grant a permit. We just wanna make sure that what you're approving here is basically compliant with what the plans are actually showing. And from the initial plans, and I think Doug, I sent a couple of emails to your office just asking you to find, send me. I haven't gotten that information tonight. I'm just respectfully requesting that information to check on, see if it's available. I'm gonna check my electronic copies, but I've been checking back and forth with town offices and they have not gotten that specific information. Doug, I did not get those from you with respect to, and they may not exist at this point because if the engineer did what you just said, and it's different than what I reviewed. I've reviewed some other rebuilds on Plum Island, on Northern Boulevard, and I can tell you, the plans are extensive, a lot more extensive. Every dimension was caught right there so that the board could look and see compliance-wise, it's laid out flat. That's all we're asking for. We're not, we're asking for equal protection of the laws. If some other people are being required to do this, everyone should be under the same parameters, not relying upon a summation. The engineer says, oh, this is here. It might be the case, but we should, without scaling and spending hours doing this, it should be laid out. This room, that room, bang, 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 bang. So it's there along with the dimensions, the heights and what the existing is versus the comparison. I understand what Mr. Chairman stated as far as what he sees, how he sees this language, but I think we need to be able to confirm those basics and I think the Conservation Commission is gonna wanna see the same thing. That's the whole reason for the PIOD, that we stay within those parameters. And that's my only point here, that we simply don't have this information now. And I know Concom in the past has specifically requested landscape plans and parking plans, specifying every spot there. I understand that they're grant bound to some extent, but if you go all to the site right now, I don't think they have the total number of spots they're proposing. I think they're proposing to add maybe 40 to 50% new spots of parking because they don't have any underground or underbuilding parking. They just have simply the, that right-hand side and they have a number of spots, it could be three, four, five or six right now. But it's changing dramatically with the elevation of going to eight feet. And the only other point I think a couple of board members have brought up tonight, there is no requirement from a FEMA stance that you go eight feet. There are other neighbors that have built their homes on that island, on the FEMA, there are only three or four, believe the barriers, two feet off the ground. So there are other houses that are being built two feet, they don't want that extra parking. We have almost an overcrowded situation where we're looking at a lot that's 5,600 square feet and you're gonna have six to eight, the way it's being proposed now, it's six to eight parking spots for that. It's basically gonna be a commercial parking lot to service one parcel. This did not exist before. They had two structures. The first structure in the front was a one-bedroom, one-story structure. Maybe one person occupied that house. If you're bumping the bedroom count with two and two, that's adding another two bedrooms, you're adding another three to four parking spots.
Right, and so there will be no parking on the street? You've asked for that. It's clearly it's a dead end. In cases where someone has not provided or shown the ability to provide two parking spots, we've called them on that. And somebody that has a particular use which is not residential, there are other requirements for parking and service and we've made sure that that's been abided by. Where somebody is providing parking and on a narrow street where somebody has an extra space, one might consider that a positive as opposed to a negative.
I think the parking is, but, there's a but. The but is, when you look at adding that second family that never existed now, you had a small one-bedroom apartment, I think it was a garage before. Now you're proposing a full structure that can be sold to a family with an 16-bedroom town. So then you have two or three people occupying that property with children and all, it's just a lot higher. And the reason it gets back, you say, how does this apply? It applies on the whole PIOD, not to increase the density or use.
What is good for one lot is equally in right for all the lots. Somebody wants to have a Fourth of July party and park 20 cars across their lot and then they can.
That's fine, I'm not questioning. I'm questioning this particular use in the front where you're taking a one-bedroom, one-story garage-like structure and allowing that to go now to a three-story structure with an additional bedroom there, an additional bedroom in the back, clearly it's gonna be excessive, it's not gonna be the same level.
Understood, but we've been through this piece by piece in terms of the parts and we've talked about the number of bedrooms and the number of additional bedrooms that they're allowed. And so they're not, they're adding bedrooms as they're up to the number that they're allowed. You know, there's, I don't know what argument, I'm not trying to make their argument, I'm trying to answer your question. And so if they had a one-bedroom and they're allowed to add one bedroom, they're allowed two bedrooms. That plan shows that there are two bedrooms there. In the back where they had two bedrooms previously, they're adding another bedroom, they now have three bedrooms. they now have three bedrooms. So, they've added, and I've, I've confirmed, and it was a question in the previous hearing, and why it was continued is that it would like some direction from the Building Inspector upon ruling of whether adding a bedroom is per the site or per the structure, and he has said that as the PIOD was graded for all of Plum Island, Newbury does not actually have that added definition within our zoning bylaws, but the City of Newbury Port has ruled that they have allowed an additional bedroom per structure onsite for a, a parcel and a property which, which has two separate structures on it. So, in his view, in his interpretation, which is what we do with the bylaws, is that we would say, okay, we're going to follow that. And, and so they have the number of bedrooms by right. The fact that they had one before and they have two now, they have it by right, they can do that. The fact that it was 10 feet tall, and the fact that now they are building it up under 35 feet, they, they have the right to do that.
Well, that's one interpretation, the Building Inspector only interprets in his eyesight, this board has the legal right to override any Building Inspector decision, and in fact, whatever the Building Inspector does, it can be appealed to this board. You are supposed to be the advisory committee to suggest that. And I guess my question would be, is, is that even legally tenable in Newbury Port? Who took that? Is it in their code, or is that an arbitrary decision that's being made? And the question here, the only reason this comes up in this case is, you've got a tiny postage stamp lot of 5,600 square feet, it just doesn't make any sense with the reading of the whole code in the PIOD, how tough those restrictions are.
If, again, I'm trying to make their argument, but if you took the FAR and the lot coverage, and they combined the two buildings into one, and they were meeting the FAR and/or reducing FAR and lot coverage for what was existing, then they're actually putting less back on the lot. I think that's their argument.
It's, I've been down on the island for 16 years, Mr. Novak, how long have you been there?
Since 1960.
So a long time. So you've seen the progression of the island, whether you like it or not, I've ripped down and torn down three or four one-bedroom cottages, made a lot of pilings, I'm part of the bad guy, but there's been hundreds of people like me that has gone on since 19, probably in the 80s, that have done the same thing.
I have no problem against all that.
And then 2,000 square foot lots.
But as long as they have complied with the actual ordinance and the PIOD, I think you have every legal right to do that. I'd be advocating on your behalf. The only reason we're questioning it in this instance is because the size of the lot and the two-building configuration, that's the only issue that's coming up before us here, it just does not make sense.
So what, what is your argument in terms of the conditions of the neighborhood for the conditions of what is being proposed as we are judging and interpreting the PIOD to be not more detrimental to the existing neighborhood?
Well, I would think that.
And using that, there are dimensional requirements that are listed here, there is Section 5B, which talks about additional bedrooms, and so we can over what they're allowed to add, because it's, it's printed here, so.
The only concern would be, is when you look at the existing structures, and obviously the back structure was lost by fire, very entitled to rebuild as of right the actual structure that's there, once they ask, ask, request to modify that. And the twist of this thing that I don't think we've ever seen before, is the fact that they're taking square footage from that back structure, adding it to the front structure, which, which is a non-conforming structure to begin with, it's only 10 feet off the roadway, and you're going up to that level of 35 feet, even though, you know, acknowledging his argument on the roof, it's still changing the configuration, the density of the neighborhood significantly by volume density, you're looking at that height, it's two, or two towers on a 5,600 square foot lot. Can it be done? Yes. Should it be done under PIOD? When, I think when you read that definition, you've read it maybe a dozen times, is it more detrimental, what's being proposed, than what was there? Arguably, yes, because if you went back and said, look, what can he do legally there? And be in conformance? That building on the front building there, what's preventing him from going up four feet off the ground to conform with FEMA regulations? And to build the existing square footage on that front building, and then to use the square footage in back, or to reduce his square footage? What he's trying to do is get, this is coming down to a profit motive, that's all it is. You're trying to take.
There's nothing in the bylaws that talks about profit motives.
No, what I'm saying is.
Everybody has the same rights, and the house next door can tear it down and do a demolition, and build it out to the max, so.
But he's not building it to the max now with two separate structures.
He's not building it to the max.
But he's building it in a zoning.
He's got two structures by right.
But not with the height. And not with volume, the density is different, the density does not exist on that front lot, that's the only issue here. You're dealing with a one-story building, and you're going to 36 feet, okay? That's the issue here, okay?
It's not going 36 feet.
Well, 35.
Right, but if, if, if he has existing structures and volumes, and they are by right, and he is reducing and improving the side setbacks, if the FAR is less, if the lot coverage is less, if the height is actually, as they explained it, is less than a house that had a full gable roof across the whole house, it is less. And so that, I believe their argument is, even though they have two structures, they still are consciously providing less than if they had taken the two structures, put them together, and built them out to the max, which, which they could do by right, and the neighbor could do by right. And yes, this is a sticky situation, because you have a small lot, and you have two existing, two non-conforming existing structures that are there by right.
I understand the board's position, my only concern here is, I believe with that front lot, to do what they're intending on doing, to taking that square footage and going to the front, would trigger the requirement for variance, because you're no longer conforming to what was there, the non-conforming structure.
What, and how would they apply a variance?
Through the board, you have a whole mechanism in your code.
What are they, what is, what is the variance?
The variance would be for adding that type of volume to the front, from the front building.
Under Chapter 40, what is the requirements for a variance? They deal with the shape and the, and the topography of the site.
Right.
So.
So still you've got the difference, this is a unique site, the Plum Island, there's very few houses, the way you have two structures, and I'd also point out.
So two structures is not the shape or the context of the land, which.
It could be, it could be that, the boards have widened, the courts of Massachusetts, the Chelsk Courts and the SJC could factor that in.
We appreciate your argument, and I think we have three independent minds that are thinking through this, and can understand what you're saying. And so, Jack, do you need any more?
I'm comfortable.
Information from Mr. Novak?
I would just request the board respectfully, tonight, or two, and it's up to you, but we need some time, I may have to come out and get that, because the one that I have does not have those dimensions. If they're saying, if they're saying is right, then the numbers are what they are, but we need to be able to confirm that. And I've been asking for this information for three months now, since you have your first hearing, I've got a number of emails, I've got them all printed out, and I still have not gotten that information. So, with all due respect to the board, we simply don't have enough of information tonight from our side to make an evaluation with respect to the PIOD requirements, but I do thank you all for your time, thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Yeah, I'll be very brief, because it's getting late, and I've spoken before, but I just want to say, after listening to both sides the whole time, I'm still opposed to the project, I still feel like we should not be giving a special permit for this, I feel like they're allowed to build what was there at the same height, but to give a special permit to allow them to go that much taller, I feel like it wouldn't be really allowed, because you're supposed to only grant a special permit if it's not going to make it more substantially, more detrimental to the neighborhood than what was there. And I feel like, like everybody said, density is mass times volume, well, volume is width times length times height. So yes, height does come in when you're talking about density. And what they're proposing as opposed to what was there, is way more dense to the neighborhood, and additionally, it's a lot, it's taken up open space, and it is more of a fire hazard to have taller buildings than what was there, and public safety does come into play only because that's part of the requirement if you're going to grant a special permit, it can't be more detrimental to the neighborhood, and it refers to public safety, density, and open space. So for those reasons, I'm opposed to any special permit being granted to allow them to build this, these structures that tall. If they want to build the tall structure, 35 feet, because there are other structures in the neighborhood 35 feet tall, that's allowed, but in my opinion, they should go under the Plum Island Oldham district, which was put there for a purpose, comply with those requirements, and build it 35 feet tall. But I don't think a special permit should be allowed to, be granted to allow them to build the two houses to 35 feet tall. Thank you for your time.
So, there is, so in, in keeping with the neighborhood, the decision and interpretation has always been that what is being proposed is in keeping with what, the context of the existing neighborhood, and, and is what is proposed within the limits and, and what is spelled out for requirements within the PIOD. So there are some conditions in which the existing neighborhood, your neighbor has, or all neighbors or all lots have the same rights in terms of size and dimensions, if you did have a street that had woefully undersized units, but had, they all have the same rights within the PIOD in which to make improvements on their, on their structures. There is some thought to what is existing and, and what might be, where existing non-conforming structures meet, or do not meet, or exceed, or exceed the requirements, it is then the determination compared to what is existing, and if all houses on the street are, are non-conforming in the same manner, then they all have the same rights equally. Doug, that's, that's how I see it, I appreciate your, your comments and your thoughts.
I guess I thought it was more detrimental than the existing structure, like than what was there, not other structures in the neighborhood, but what was there on that lot.
Well, when you, when it, when it says more detrimental to the neighborhood, they're obviously considering the neighborhood and the, and the adjacent lots, if it says to the existing structure in terms of. Yeah, and then, as, item number three, it says, the rebuilt structures shall not contain more than the total number of bedrooms in all the demolished or destroyed structures on the locust, provided however that one additional bedroom may be created where the total number of bedrooms before the catastrophe or demolition was a one or two bedroom had not been added to under, basically previously 97-4D 5B. So, there are individual requirements for number of bedrooms, height, position on, on the lot, and those are then added to in terms of how much lot coverage you have. I think, you know, the point of, of scaling off, it didn't scale off the eaves and the overhangs, but there are requirements, and if, if there was some motion made, then there could be a condition that the building must meet the overhang requirements, which I believe is 22 inches, and I can't put my finger on it right this second, but, you know, there are requirements in terms of how the FAR, I believe it's in the instructions, and how you calculate the, the lot coverage, which is where it says that.
Just make a comment, please, just make a comment. I mean, I am sympathetic to what is existing and what will be, I think that's, and I think that's the front building, I think the, the back building, you know, by right, they have the, you know, ability to do that. I mean, I do have the problem, again, with the front building, with exacerbating, you know, the problem going from 14 to 34.7, and maybe that isn't, potentially not in the spirit of the POI, POID, when you look at what is existing, it will be, that's, that's my comment.
I have a question, wait, this is to the owner and the designer, was it ever considered that the screened-in porches wouldn't be covered, right? Because that, you take that roof away, right, you're reducing the mass on that front building on that corner, was anything like that ever looked at previously?
If there's no greenheads, I mean, we wouldn't have put such a focus on, I mean, it's a small screen porch, it's like 6'5".
Well, it's half of the, the front, right, the front aside, it's half of the front left side. Just wondering if that had been considered at all, I mean.
Just from usability-wise, we did, but it just seems with, and from using it during the summer months, it's just better to have it screened with. They don't use my rooftop deck now, they don't go up to the deck, that's wide open, so we wanted to, we wanted to covered porches instead.
I think most likely, if we were designing it without the screen porch, we probably would have utilized that square footage towards the FAR, you know, it's, yeah.
Study using it for two months, we can use it, you know, three, three, sometimes four months.
If, I, in terms of what was presented, what, what you argued for, and what has been shown on the plans, it seems that the lingering question in terms of density is, is height from what was to what is for the front house being proposed, and whether it's, whether it's by right or in keeping the, it is, within keeping of the dimensional requirements, it's still of an opinion or interpretation of, is it more detrimental to the neighborhood? So would there be, or could there be some consideration that maybe the front house is, is, is lower on pilings?
For some parking, you know.
Just, again, when, looking at 10th Street, and looking at the exacerbated problems with parking, with the size of the street, with parking, with fire apparatus getting in and out of there, it, and getting, obviously, the biggest problem we have, I think, in the neighborhood and causing more problems is parking, and so that's why we created it. And then, if you looked at any studies lately, I think people have with the flooding that's anticipated, I went to a seminar last year in Boston, it was pretty shocking what's going to happen in the next 20 or 30 years, and no offense, that's just in Boston, they were doing a study, and sit, but on the barrier islands, like Plum Island, it's, it's not good. So I would, I would not like to see that any lower unfortunately because of that.
If I could, if I could kind of jump on the chairman's comment, because that's what I was thinking, it's a difficult, difficult case, because on one hand, we have a local resident, good reputation developer, we want to encourage that, I love how they complied with the rear setback line, make it 10 feet, that's a good thing, sprinklers are all good, that's all good. On the other hand, there's been significant local opposition, mostly on the density issue, which, which Eric just adjusted, and the density is, I think we're all agreeing, it's the height, it's, you're looking at a wall where you used to have a 10-foot, a 12-foot one-story building, and that's a big change. Admitting in every, that, that everyone who develops their property has the right to develop it to the fullest, I think if you were trying to, I don't want to say appease, but if you were trying to make it a little bit more acceptable to the neighbors, that might be an avenue.
We did skinny out the front on purpose, so if you look at that house, it's actually wider in the rear, skinnier in the front, so although it is a little bit taller, it is less than half the width of the, in the existing house. The existing house spreads the whole front, and actually the car park, you know, there's a few next to it, they're both deep, but there's a lot of people park right in front of the house. So, when I designed the house, you know, obviously, we could have gone 10 feet on the left, we pulled it back 12 feet on purpose, and then in the front, if you see the house, it is wider in the back, and it's pretty narrow in the front, and, you know, when you are walking by, when you look to your right, you right now see nothing except for an old dilapidated house that is almost the entire, most of the length of the lot. When you walk by now, you're going to see three, see straight through to the rear, the next parcel over, it's going to be unobstructed views kind of through, and the visual is all, is a lot skinnier, going, you know, it is two stories instead of one, and it is raised up a little bit, but the narrowness in the front is kind of as tight as we could pull it, you know, because you either go this way or you go this way. Unfortunately, conservation wants this way, so you kind of got to feel to everybody.
Appreciate your answer.
I think what Ben is saying is, right now we have this much wall, although it's one-story facing the street, and as you can see in designing this, now this is what faces the street, it's a much, it's taller, but narrower. So again, you know, I guess it'd be an interesting measurement if we took the, the 12 by, I don't know, approximately how wide is that existing house now? I'm going to guess it's, if this is 33 feet, you know, this is probably, let's say 23 feet by 12, and how wide is this house now in the front?
It's like 17 or 18.
So it's 17 or 18 by 28. So, that front end, this wall is 10 feet back, this one is only 6. So, you know, the, the massing wall that's at the street right now, you've got a 12 by 25 that's 6 feet away, and we're. twenty-five that's six feet away, and we're proposing a seventeen by twenty-eight that's ten and a half feet away. But I would like to just make one statement, I did listen intently to what Mr. Attorney Novak said, as well as our neighbors, and they both said, if you were meeting the law, if you were meeting the P I O D, we wouldn't have a problem here. Well, as I've spent the last three meetings trying to convey to you, we are in fact meeting the requirements under the P I O D. We are, and you want to talk about density, I have to keep coming back, we are reducing the lot coverage, we are reducing the F A R. We meet all the other dimensional requirements under the P I O D. We've reduced the non-conformities that we could. We meet the law under the P I O D. So I don't understand that, you know, and I'm hearing, if you meet the law, we'd be okay with this. We do meet the law. We just aren't doing what they would like to see. They don't like the height of the building. And with all due respect, again, I can appreciate that, but the law tells us, we can go to thirty-five feet. And that's what we've done. And we've done it partially to address this parking issue, the sand issue, and as Mr. Daly's pointed out, the flood issue. The other thing Mr. Attorney Novak said was that, you know, they haven't had a chance to see this, they, you know, they don't, they haven't had a chance. The truth is, we have, we submitted these plans three months ago. They have been a matter of public record, and I'm not necessarily sure it's my responsibility or quite frankly, the board's responsibility to, you know, to custom send everything to someone they want. It's available. Come on, we've been in this business for years. Anyone could just go to town hall, yeah, to the town hall here and get those plans. They have been here, they have been on record, they've been available to the public for three months now, four months. And, you know, to question the validity of them, the best I can ever do is this right here. They all have a stamp by a licensed surveyor or engineer attesting to the fact that the numbers shown on our plans are correct. And they, you know, we showed them matrix, we've provided a lot coverage calculation that's been part of that public record. We gave a FAR calculation that's been part of that record. This information has been available for four months, and I can't understand why, you know, we're being questioned whether we've provided the right stuff or whether it's been here long enough. We all know it has. I just want to finish with three pictures. We talked about these buildings being too high, and going to have an impact on our neighbors. Well, here's the house directly across the street from that first cabin. Pretty imposing. Massing and scaling is pretty big, and quite frankly, I don't, do not believe this house meets the twenty-foot setback. This is directly across the street from what we're proposing in that front house. These are the two houses, if you're looking at our property from the street, these are the two houses to the left, the one on the street and the one behind it. It's a three-story house next door, three stories. And the one behind it to our, you know, so we've got a three-story house sitting right here, that's one foot off the street. We've got another, the second house, which sits right here, it's not three stories, but it's no smaller than our building. We have a doghouse on the top, but other than that, look at it, it's raised up on pilings, it's got two full stories and a flat roof. This building is going to look, this building looks very much like this building, it sits right there. And then to the other side, on the front. Take that, what you do with your. Final picture. Yep, here's the picture, oh, here it is. Sorry. Here's the house, as you're sitting on the street, to our direct right. Look at the height of this peak. Okay? It's all of thirty-four feet, thirty feet. So we're surrounded by a house on this side with thirty-four feet. To our, to the other side, we've got a three-story house, and to the backside of it, we've got, again, I can't profess that it's three stories or thirty-four feet, but the box of that house is certainly at or above the height of our box. And across the street, I don't know, is that a three-story house or not? But we are surrounded by tall structures. These structures are not going to, you know, overpower our three closest neighbors, and we've got nothing behind us, to be honest with you. There's no development back there, and Ben showed you that, you know, this is what they would have the right to do. They could build a thirty-five-foot-high house as long as it's ten feet off our backline. That's what could be built right behind us by right. Someone could come in tomorrow for a building permit and for, to build a thirty-five-foot-high house right behind us. I just can't agree.
I appreciate, I mean, everything you've said, totally. And I think the, I think my concern is that now you're putting two versus just one, so I mean, I know you're at by right, I understand that, but that exacerbates the neighborhood.
But to the left, there's two houses on one lot, is a two-family to the right of us.
But we're talking about right now.
Well, right now, we're a two-family, they're a two-family, they're a two-family, so.
But the existing front is totally different. I mean, the existing front houses.
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, I can't disagree. We're going from fourteen feet to technically thirty-four feet if you measure to the doghouse. I'd argue it's, from a massing and scaling perspective, we should be thinking twenty-seven. And of course, what you see from the road, we're going from this to this. So the massing and scale, and we're pushing it back. But the bottom line is, and as we've heard repeatedly, do you meet the law? The town defined the fact that you could have a thirty-five-foot-high building on Plum Island. They've said, you know, you've got to be ten feet from your sidelines, ten feet from your back, twenty feet from your front. They've defined, the law defines the restrictions and the dimensions, and we're meeting them.
Can I ask a question?
We're meeting them.
Could I just ask a question concerning that? Because maybe I misunderstood this. Are you in the twenty percent and twenty-five percent for lot coverage in the F A R? Would you say you're meeting Plum Island overly district requirements? So to be thirty-five feet, the way I understood it, it has to be just twenty percent and twenty-five percent for like the lot coverage and the floor area ratio.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we are a pre-existing non-conforming. So our baseline is what exists, our baseline is what exists today. So in terms of our lot coverage, we are over, but that's grandfathered.
But you don't have a thirty-five-foot guarantee.
We're bringing it down.
If I could say, we do have a precedent for this on Southern Boulevard. There are two new houses that were built on the same lot, and one of them is within the front setback, and they're both the same height.
What street was it?
Southern Boulevard, I'm looking at it right now.
But we're dealing with.
But again, I'm not even pointing at precedent. I want you to look at our.
Hang on a second, hang on. There, right, so there are the dimensional requirements, as you just said, for the P I O D. There are lots that have pre-existing, non-conforming structures, that have positions on lot and certain sizes. And in terms of the understanding of the interpretation of what's being proposed, is being not more detrimental to the neighborhood, and has been considered in the past, what is the existing, and are there improvements made? And if it's, you know, we would hope and we would try to get everyone to meet within exactly what the P I O D dimensional requirements are, but there are lots that have structures that exceed that for the lot size, but their neighbors all exceed them for the lot size too. And so in the effort or improvement of a lot, to have setbacks made, to have the height be conforming, to have reductions in F A R and lot coverage is all been seen as positive within the rights for the pre-existing, non-conforming, either uses of structures. That's how we've ruled them past. So, any more questions or concerns? Do you have any issues of?
Anybody else?
Um, you know, there, there are, there have been motions made with conditions and improvements and adjustments to plans where part of the condition is that updated documents need to be submitted in order to meet what was agreed upon for adjustments, I can say that. So that's, that's part of the process, I guess that's all I'm asking for. So at this point, I guess, close the public hearing and ask for a motion?
I don't, I don't know if you want to consider withdrawing this submission with prejudice until maybe you had some additional plans, I just don't want to have some negative.
So we don't?
Without prejudice. Without prejudice. You can come back again.
So we don't have, basically, we don't have a favorable motion at the moment to be made, is, I guess, what is being stated. And if there was, I don't want to speak to you more.
You know, just, you know, if you had additional plans, I mean, I think the concern is the front building, and I understand where you're coming from. I think when you look at what is existing and what will be, I think it's a big difference. And I think that's what we're trying to.
Help me to understand, I don't disagree with you that we are proposing significant change to the front building, but I don't, I think, I don't think you can look at it that way. In the sense that you need to look at what we're doing to this law. The fact that we have two structures, we all know, is unique.
I understand what you're doing.
So, so, you know, you have to look at the fact that we're reducing footprint, period, you know, and that we're reducing F A R on the total site, which is really the concern with density, right? Is, is F A R, lot coverage, height, distances, all of that. It's not just height.
But it is a significant amount of height. You're literally.
It is a significant change.
You're doubling.
Yes. But we are doing so in conformance with your bylaw, and as I think I've just shown you, certainly not inconsistent with the four directly abutting properties. You know, so why, if those properties have the right to be thirty to thirty-four feet high with three stories and all these other things, and all we want to do is take our structures and be conforming with what is surrounding us, I don't see how that can be deemed to be significantly detrimental to everybody else. And I also think a judge is going to have a hard time understanding how, when we're proposing a height that is expressly allowed by right, and we're staying under that, how that makes us uniquely detrimental to every, to our neighborhood when the houses around us are that height. I can't get past that.
Not a rebuttal either way, but the uniqueness is that you have two structures as opposed to one is the difference in the neighborhood, right?
But that's, that's, that's by right, that's by law, that's, that's a benefit that this lot has. Just because we happen to have two structures legally, pre-existing non-conforming, they're legally, why should the analysis of us going up to the legal limit of the height when we're surrounded by taller buildings, why should that be reviewed any differently? Is it because we got the benefit of having two structures that we get the rights to improve those structures taken away from us?
We could remove the doghouse from the front setback completely, so I could make sure that on the plans, that doghouse that, so basically, within the twenty-foot by-right setback, we would, we could probably make sure that doghouse is out of that twenty-foot setback, so that basically, you're really looking at a twenty-seven-foot roof line within the front setback. Because we keep talking about the thirty-four feet, but actually, I think that doghouse is close enough that I could, you know, we could put a condition or whatever that, you know, the doghouse would be outside of the front twenty-foot setback.
Jack, you have any? No, any issues, or you, would you, would you make a motion favorable?
Oh, yeah.
How do you see this?
I see the density as an issue, but I think that the developers within the range. I do see the density as an issue, but I think, I kind of think he's got it.
I think after looking at some of the existing totals tomorrow, I'm leaning in the same way in terms of, if you were to sketch over a flat roof at twenty-seven and not a gable roof, is the structure lower than what it could be? And so in terms of someone that comes in and tries to totally max out every little square inch which we've had before, and try to tweak and gain every little exception, you know, is the expansion on the lot? Somebody has improved and made efforts to try to not max out or take every exception, then is, you know, how is that in keeping with someone else?
I think it does keep, I mean, it does keep with it. I agree that it does keep with it.
Right, and especially if I look at.
The back one?
Something like that, if that was to be the house and the roof, and the roof decks are, you know, are, well, it's not just totally maxed out for what it could be, I guess is the point of overbuilding or proposed, not overbuilding.
Makes, makes a little bit more sense.
Are there any other concerns in terms of items that?
Could you just review what you said, previously said about the doghouse one more time?
So it's in the rear of the building.
Here it is.
Anyway.
It's here?
Yeah. And that was also deliberate. So when we designed the building, not only did the building get skinnier in the front, the doghouse is actually in the rear part of the building. So I believe the way it sits, I got to mention it out, but I think we could remove potentially that, that, out of the twenty-foot setback, potentially. So we could potentially say that doghouse cannot be within the twenty-foot front required setback. You know, it could be a condition to make sure of that. So whether we do, whether we can, I got to go back and exactly look at it, I think it's right, it's close, and I could probably shift it a little bit, but it could be a condition that if we can't, it would have to go to a door, you know, one of those skylight doors or something. But it could be a condition that the doghouse cannot be within the front setback, or within any setbacks, actually. None of the doghouses could be in any setbacks.
Do you have a mission?
If you're going to reconsider all that, I'd like to see it, like to see the plans we've done. And also, I know all these houses, I'd like proof that they are as high as they're saying, because I don't think they are. Thank you.
If the doghouse doesn't come any forward in the corner of the building, the way it's set back from the front to the back, then it's, it's just past twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two feet.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, that was a deliberate effort, so when we talk about thirty-five feet, when I was designing it, I actually placed the dock, you'll notice, the doghouses are deliberately paced, the rear house is all the way in the front of the house as far as possible, and the doghouse in the front house is as far back on the left, you know, as far back as from the possible. And I actually pulled it five feet in from the side setback as well. So we made as much effort as we could to get that, and when you're on the street, you're actually not going, if you're in the street cut, you're actually not going to be able to see that in front of the house being ten feet back, looking up at an angle, so.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Any comments or anything to add or any? Comments or anything to add or any guidance for the board?
No, I think taking some of those steps in terms of amassing, you know, I think that's important.
Okay. Is there a motion you made?
I'll make a motion to grant a request, special permit as opposed to structure with all the necessary setbacks, rear and side. One condition, that the dog has not, not be in setback of at least twenty feet.
You could say any of the setbacks, so, because we'll just say.
Yeah, and they have to be within.
All required setbacks.
All required setbacks.
It's fine, because the building, it would have to overhang the building face, otherwise it is drawn to do that. We're really just talking about the front setback in which that would apply. Any discussion on the motion? I have a couple other comments or conditions.
You need a second before you have a discussion.
Oh, sorry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Martha. Just kind of get to my condition. All right. In terms of discussion, I would add that the property remain in single ownership for both structures? That there's no condominiumizing or condominiumizing, whatever you want to call it, of the lot? So there's no separation of the two units, the two structures, I should say? That the submitted plans for the building permit be provided to Z B A so that the, so that the sprinklers and the exterior arty board are clearly noted? That the propane tanks on the site are a minimum of ten feet from the lot line?
I don't think you're hearing any of us.
Well, I heard one part.
Chairman, can we respond to your proposed conditions?
I go through all of them, or do you?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize.
I got a hundred. That was the property. So two, that the condition of motion be that updated plans are submitted to reflect the change to the stairs of the rear unit? That the drawings submitted to the building permit clearly show and state the sprinklers and the fireproof party board sighting on the drawings? That all propane tanks are located with a minimum of ten feet from the lot, from the side or rear lot lines? I have one question that I forgot to ask, but there is a chain link fence that's shown over the property line on the west side that's existing, and it's shown on the new plan to remain existing? That that is shown as being removed? Is it?
Yeah, I think that the new plan says, remove existing encroaching fence. All right, is that the one you're referring to? Is it this one?
No, it's this one here. Is that like a patio wall or is that a chain link fence? I see that as a chain link fence.
On the, yeah.
On the west.
This little thing here, what is that?
I think that's an existing condition. We can remove it.
Move it.
Sure, it's some sort of like older fencing that's.
Right, but your, your, it looks like something on your property is encroaching on the neighbor's property.
Yes, I'm sure you can put that to remove.
That's very good. That the revised drawing plans and site plans show parking spaces on the plan? Did you guys all capture that or? Okay, so out of those, I think there were six of them.
Six combined, yes.
You can respond to those.
Mr. Chairman, just one, and that would be, we have provided to you information. It is Mr. Daley's intention to own these properties together for his family's use and hopefully his friends. But I would ask the board to consider whether they have the legal right to dictate the ownership structure of a property. I mean, we don't know what the future brings. And to take away the right of someone to be able to own their property in a trust, in a condominium structure, or in fee simple, I just don't, I've never seen the board have jurisdiction to do that. And, you know, the ownership structure of the property is such that it doesn't impact or prevent the intensity of use. So it certainly, I don't know how a correlation could be drawn that if these were, you know, as far as physical ownership, they were, it was a condominium, how that would be more detrimental to the neighborhood? Because again, it doesn't dictate or have anything to do with use. So just the fact that they're owned together or in a condominium structure, you're still going to have the same level of activity and use. And again, I would just ask the board to consider that. And even if it takes a touching base with town council, I've just never seen a board dictate ownership, how you ownership structure.
I think the intent is not to allow the exacerbation of use for, you have the uses, you have the structures by right. They're single family on a single-owned lot, and so they should remain, remain that way and not change over time to have two separate ownerships that would then want to do two separate things. Then we're going to have two different people coming back to us for trying to make an argument that they should be able to change or revise their, their building and take the benefit of the whole lot. So they go hand in hand together on the lot.
Yeah, but they would, whether they're held in fee simple ownership or in condominium ownership or even if they were put into a trust, it will always remain one lot. It always has to remain one lot. And the conditions and the applications of the rules and regulations to one structure apply to them together, you know. So like, for instance, you know, someone couldn't come back and say, I want to increase my F A R because if you look at my house on top of the lot, I have space. Our F A R is based on the together. So you couldn't have someone doing individual things like that. Plus, generally, when something's put in a condominium, condominium unit owners don't have the right to, you know, do zoning changes, additions, or anything without the approval of the.
It's currently held, the buildings are currently held under one owner. And if we just say that, continue the current ownership structure, and we're not dictating anything other than what you already have.
The only thing I would point out is if it's required to be one owner, the only thing that could be a problem later, like Dave has family that's going to be staying there, he's going to own it hopefully a very long time. But if you dictate that, there's a very high likely that somebody's going to want to move their family into the back house. And then what do you do with that extra house? It's going to be an Airbnb. So what you're basically is condominiums, most likely, could be two families that live there full-time and are not partying. It's a very quiet household. If you dictate that one owner has to have it in the future, it's a very high likelihood that it's going to be a guarantee, that it's going to be a short-term rental, which is going to bring, you know. So it's leaving it open, you know, if it's condos, it's more likely it'll be, you know, owners, but what, it's keeping.
What it is in the future is, you know, it's, it's what it is now and what would make sense in terms of the neighborhood for controls so that the use is not exacerbated by the change. And we've recently had somebody that wanted to combine two properties and said they were going to live there forever, their family's going to be there, and they wanted to push one house closer to the lot line because the other house was further away, but they own both lots, and it was going to be that way. Yeah, it was going to be that way for them until they sold it. And if it's this way and it remains this way, how does it, that's, that's the thought or the control that goes with this in terms of having something that's unique and different to the neighborhood in terms of controlling and not exacerbating use? That's, that's the intent of the condition. So if you have a condo and you break up the ownership and you have two separate people doing two separate things, I don't know. Maybe someone could argue that if somebody owned it and they had an Airbnb that actually takes care of it, then it actually might be less use intensity, less than more. So.
I think he's having a pretty good evening here, Chairman. You might want to save this one for your appeal counselor.
I appreciate that statement and I do, I do, I do appreciate all the work that the board's done on this. I'm just, that, you know, from a legal perspective, that's just a tough condition, you know, to actually dictate that the ownership of this lot will forever, you know, be.
I don't know, that is, that is a gray area.
But if it's a condition.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Obviously, I totally understand the board's perspective. It's been under the same ownership. You want to carry that forward. That's the guarantees we're trying to make, but that, you know, obviously, the market could shift. So I get that. My only request is that was going to be a condition, if you guys could get that approved, to see if you have the jurisdiction to make that a condition. I've never seen it in multiple, the hundreds of developments I've done. I would be open to that. If they say yeah, then I'm fine with it. If no, then I'd rather have it removed. That's the only request I would make.
Yeah, we can check with town council and we can check with assessors if there's something that makes it, that makes it something different than what it, than what it is now and what, and how it is seen on a lot. That's, that's the condition, is that the use that is there now remains.
Okay.
And we're not looking for separation or the ability to separate that would make the use more detrimental. And if we could ask.
Then it's acceptable, as long as we verify with town council that it's, you know, not, not creating any illegal condition that would then nullify the permit, we'll, we'll go with that. Thank you.
That's more than fair.
Okay.
I don't know, to that end, if you want to put any conditions on, you know, no increase in bedrooms, no, you know, no further increase.
I think those are in there.
Oh, there are two, right? It could be three.
There are, but there have been cases where people try to come back.
We'd be fine with that too.
We'd be fine with that too.
All right. So then we'll add another condition that would say that no further increase in bedrooms would be allowed in either of the two structures. So that is, that's, that's in, again.
Right, right. Or, or maybe no additions.
Well, that'd be totally against the rules.
So they'd be a thing.
Right. I'm good with that.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
But adding, or what?
Adding, adding those conditions.
Adding a new condition?
To the bedrooms and?
So if we're trying to control this, do you think that if, with your height and the presentation that you made and what, having the twenty-seven feet and then having the doghouses, that we would also then just go and say that there would be no addition of changes to the roof that would add mass?
Yes.
Fine.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
I know it's a major concern of the board and the office of the neighbors. We'd be, I'm totally fine with that.
Tweak your doghouse, you could tweak your fence, or you could tweak the area of the attic or the deck up there, but you couldn't change the mass?
Absolutely.
No.
Right, no wading at all over gaining that extra third attic.
Yep.
We're fine with that condition. You're not planning on taking these?
Do you have that?
I do.
Okay. Additional thoughts or comments?
Those are pretty good ones, by the way.
Martha?
She's playing her game tonight.
So with that, we will close the discussion and move to a vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Thank you again. I know this has been a long one and a tough one, and I do appreciate the board's time and consideration.
So we are going to review, since there are, there are already now five typical standard conditions about, talking about changes. And with these unique conditions to this property, we'd like to get, review this and get this to you while we're asking town council about the condition of the property in terms of ownership or ability to, to any conditions of ownership that would be perceived to exacerbate the use.
Okay. No, that'd be great, because if I could see the conditions, I tried to jot them down, but that way too, we could begin working on, you know, the plan, changes and all of those things.
May I just say that you keep the public hearing open if you want to get input from, from the applicant?
That's good.
On the decision.
Okay, so we, we keep, well, if we keep the public session open, then you can submit information and we can hear from the public as well.
On what? The draft, just the draft decision?
If, if something comes back that is not favorable and you want to tweak it and present it in order of a change, that would be the reason.
Okay. But you guys have voted, but you just want to keep the public hearing open? So when do you close the vote?
After, after the decision's finalized. This is what we do for the final.
Oh, in fact, you could, you're going to wait for the final decision for the board to sign it, and then you close? Okay.
Right.
Understood. Yes, that's fine. All right, I get it.
The drawings.
Yes, I understand. Yes, all right.
So basically, it's, it's direction to draft the decision if the conditions are stated.
Exactly. I understand. Correct. Yes, of course. Sorry.
You've got a project.
It's been a long night.
Thank you. This is a tough vote, you guys. I appreciate it.
So it's open. Let's continue.
Oh, so hang on a second. So why we have Martha here to help guide you. So we're going to continue this the next month through the third Thursday of the month, of which we'll have a draft decision that is made. We will review it separately. We'll then see it together with you, review it. Hopefully, there's nothing that gets changed, and we'll sign it and go from there. But if something comes up that's a little twisted or different, then we'll have the meeting open to discuss it that night.
Very good. No, that's great. So the third Thursday of next month.
Make a motion to continue the meeting until next month, Thursday, and all the conditions are drafted.
I think it's twenty-first.
Twenty-third.
At seven-thirty P M. here.
Is it the twenty-first again? Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second, a jack.
I don't have a driver now.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. You going to call Uber?
I'm going to call.
Anyone going to the island, they need to drive. Thank God.
All right. There's no new, no newer other business still to be motioned to.
Motion to close the meeting.
Close the meeting. Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.